Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have the advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and are transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Starletger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Here.
Ms. Amiga.
Here.
Mr. Splendoria.
Present.
Mr. Shonur.
Present.
Mrs. Dai. Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. But before I announce that, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow public comments on resolutions only. Our Board Regulations #0167 allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you will be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly, or disrupts the meeting, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Please remember to state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable each and every time you address the board. And as a reminder, this is for items that are on the agenda. There is a second portion later on for items on or off the agenda. Meeting is open to public for comment on items on the agenda. Seeing none. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. How's everybody doing on this rainy, cold evening?
Okay, very good.
Fantastic. We are in Week Six of being back to school for the first cohort at the elementary, right? So far, so good? Fantastic. Glad to hear it. Alrighty, so anybody have any committee reports?
It's kind of quiet.
Alright, well, I'm sure our high school guest speaker Fran must have a report. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Before I give my report, I would just like to express how happy I was being back in school last week. It was actually really fun, like, I thought it would be very depressing, but everyone was smiling behind their masks, I could tell, and it was just really great to be in the building. Both talent under the stars and our virtual pep rally went really well, and if anyone wants to watch the pep rally, it's on our Instagram CG Panther Pride. Additionally, about two weeks ago, members of the student council were part of the annual Light the Night Walk. Usually, it's an in-person lantern slash festival slash walk to raise awareness for leukemia. However, this year, it had to be totally virtual, but still such an amazing experience, and we fundraised over $100 for the foundation. Coming up on Halloween, the 31st, we'll have a table at the town hall drive-through trick-or-treating. And the CGHS Theater/Music Department is currently holding auditions for the winter show. We're doing "It's a Wonderful Life," but the live radio play version. It will be performed here, live, in person, with social distancing and masks, of course, and it's going to be livestreamed to our audience, and the show dates are December 18th and 19th. Lastly, either this week or the first week of November, the council's going to have a meeting on upcoming events for November and December. So that's pretty much it.
Great, thank you. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that Mr. Shonur and I attended, I think it was the sixth annual breast cancer walk that the recreation hosted last week. And it was very nice, it was all socially distant, it was at Panther Park, there were some vendors there, and it was just a nice event, so, to raise money for breast cancer. Alright, moving on, we have two board presentations this evening. Are we going to have the Memorial Middle School one first, Mr. Grosso? Okay, our first one is the Memorial Middle School Sixth Grade Presentation on Biomimicry and the Solutions of Real-World Problems.
Good evening, Board of Education members. Superintendent Grosso, thank you so much for having us tonight. I'd also like to thank our parents, and our students, and Mr. Lugameno for taking the time to come out tonight. Leading up to this school year, Mr. Lugameno and I had a conversation, he reached out to me, with some concerns and/or wanted to discuss, possibly looking for some guidance on how could we provide a meaningful experience, given the content that he teaches in STEM education, with the fact that it's all cooperative, hands-on, innovative learning. And we discussed definitely ideas going back and forth, but our students have far outperformed and exceeded our expectations, and they're here tonight to show what they've been able to do virtually. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lugameno to introduce our students.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Lugameno, I'm the STEM teacher, for those of you that don't know me. At MMS, I teach fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And because the two main tenets of STEM are hands-on and collaboration, I had some concerns going into the school year of how were we really going to make it meaningful? So, you know, Mr. Corrigan and I had numerous conversations over the summer to try and figure something out, and, you know, the school year started, and I still wasn't entirely sure how it was going to work. The collaborative aspect really concerned me the most. And then I got this sixth grade class, and I don't know if it was the chemistry, I don't know what it was, but from almost day one, they just clicked with one another. Most classes, I ask a question, and because most students are, you know, it's new for them, they're on the screen, so they don't like talking as much. This class was just, anything I said, next thing I knew, I was no longer in control, they had it, and that was amazing. In STEM, I try to stay hands-off as much as possible. I know I'm a teacher, but I try to teach as little as possible in STEM. I try to give the control to the students. They always start with self-explorations, where they just kind of explore a topic on their own. I give them a topic, and then they go on, and then, I mean, this class, all of a sudden, the Google Classroom just started clicking, and you saw a link to this, a video here, a link to this, and all of a sudden, I saw the students started talking on the Google Zoom about what they were finding. The most impressive thing I think I saw was when a student, we were talking about the Great Pacific Garbage Patch and the problem of all the, and the students are going to talk about that a little bit more in a minute, but one student said, "Well, why don't we just, you know, use a filter?" And me, as a teacher, I was like, "That's a pretty good idea," and I always try to point out, "Well, why this wouldn't work?" And he said, "A filter," and then all of a sudden, another student said, because I said, "Well, what about, like, the small animals? We don't want to, when we create a solution in STEM, we don't ever want to make a bigger problem." So I was like, "Yeah, but what about the animals?" And all of a sudden, another student chimed in and was like, "Yeah, but what if we use some sort of sensors?" And then another student chimed in and said, "Yeah, and we can also use video," and this became an everyday occurrence, where the students were just iteration after iteration after iteration. They, it became, it came to a point where when the students would start giving an idea, they would almost start thinking to themselves, "Alright, but it's not in mid-sentence. Alright, what if we try this?" And then like, "Yeah, but that wouldn't work because of this, or what if we try..." This group of students was absolutely amazing. Now, before they present, they created this presentation, they've never been in a room together, okay? They've never, we, this was done, they used their own time after school to create this. We would be on a Google Meet, the five of us, sometimes three of us, sometimes four of us, and it just kind of evolved over time. They've never really had a chance to practice this, they've never had a chance to practice this. So I'm super proud that they were even willing to come up here and talk to you about some of the different topics that we covered in class. So today, they just really came to, you know, we looked at a bunch of real-world problems, they came up with different solutions, so they're really just going to come up and kind of give you some information about the different topics we covered, and some of the designs that they've thought of, created to maybe solve some of these problems. I have to say, some of their ideas are viable solutions to these problems. I mean, they just built, and they, they thought about it, would it have been better if we could have been a little more hands-on, absolutely, but for the circumstances, what they did was absolutely amazing. So I'd like to bring them up, if we could just stay, make sure we stay good six feet apart. We have Tyler, and Kayla, and Cam, and Michelle, and, yes, please, they did an amazing job. So yeah, let's make sure we stay about six feet apart, and they're just going to tell you a little bit about what we've done. And Cam even on his own kind of built a prototype of one of his ideas, so that was really cool to see. So I'll click through for you guys if you want, and...
We can, yeah, wipe it down, just wipe it behind there, pass it along to... Tyler, can we just switch, because you two were kind of... Alright, who wants to lead us up? Tyler, Kayla. One, two, Tyler. Alright, so this is their presentation on Biomimicry and Sustainability. Typically, not the most impressive or most exciting of the STEM, once the students get to 3D printing and website design, robotics, that's usually where I see the excitement. This year, this class was where we saw it. So this is Cam, Kayla, Michelle, and Tyler. Alright, so you just, Tyler, you want to be on?
Okay, so, um, we learned about biomimicry, and it's when you make a design about something that's in real life, so you could have like a manta ray like Cam did, that will pick up garbage, and it could be many other things. So, um, in STEM, we all made up an invention that had to be inspired by biomimicry, so mine was a snake that can go in and fight fires in tight places. In the next slide, you will see some of the inventions that we made. You also see some examples of biomimicry. So I think the next slide is pictures and examples of biomimicry. Yeah, so the Velcro is inspired by some seeds, like, on the ground, like, those seeds, like, that blow around. So a man was on a walk with his dog one day, and the seeds started sticking to his dog, so he went home to, like, try to figure out what they were, and he saw that they had, like, tiny hooks on them, so he made up the invention of Velcro. There's also like a bullet train, inspired by a bird with, like, a long beak. There's also an armadillo backpack, obviously inspired by armadillo. So this is my invention. It's a killer whale. So basically, since there's a lot of sharks coming closer to shore because of the warmer waters, the killer whale would scare the sharks away so that they wouldn't be able to disturb the swimmers. It has a camera in its eye, so it would, like, transmit to the lifeguard, so you would be able to see, so they would be able to see what, where the sharks were. It also have, like, heat sensors in its fins, so it could, like, detect where the sharks
So this is my invention, the Flying Squirrel Robot, and basically, it's supposed to intend on being a flying squirrel, and during this Corona pandemic, it's supposed to deliver food to you, and it has wind propellers on its hands and feet, and it's controlled by the original deliverer, and it has clenched teeth that hold on the food, and it's pretty heavy, so it doesn't fall down. It has cameras inside of the ear, and its nose is pointy, so it can ring your doorbell, and then "Bon Appétit," there you go.
So this is my invention, the Right Night Blanket. It solves the problem of having too many blankets for the wrong season. It mimics an Arctic fox's fur, so in the winter, it has a thicker fur, and it's also, like, white. And then in the spring, it switches to thinner, thinner fur, and it's brown. But it's also heavy, so if you like your blankets heavy, there's that. Hello, helpers of the world slash MMS peers, today we are going to talk about renewable That was Cam's intro to fossil fuels and renewable energy. So a simple way to remember the three common types of non-renewable ener, of the fossil fuels, which are non-renewable resources, are, is CON, which stands for coal, oil, and natural gas. Fossil fuels, like I said, are non-renewable resources, meaning that they cannot be remade. Renewable energy, on the other hand, can be remade. So here are some renewable energy examples. Trees can be replanted over and over again. Hydropower also uses the force to, for flooring water and to energy. Solar power uses the sun's energy to make power, and wind energy uses the wind to create energy as long as the wind, as long as there's wind power.
Anyone want to add anything about solar or renewable energy? Who wants to talk about Great Pacific Garbage Patch? Not me, someone else. Me? No.
Tyler.
Who wants to talk?
Well, the Great Pacific Garbage Patch is a big gyre that's between, I think it's Hawaii and California, and it's just a big, big, like, sheet of, almost garbage, but it's all over the ocean. And they said by 2050, there'll be more plastic in the ocean than fish. So, and also, when the birds eat the plastic, it goes in their stomachs and makes them think they're full, but it really, they're really not full, so that's how they are dying. And some solutions that we thought of in class was an anglerfish, manta ray, and a submarine.
So actually, Cam, this was one of the cool things we did as well in class, where one student brought up a type of animal, and you can see those aren't everyday animals. So someone would say an anglerfish. I think Cam, you brought up the anglerfish in class, and why an anglerfish? Why would an anglerfish be a good solution to this problem?
Well, there's a lot of garbage goes through the bottom of the ocean, and anglerfish usually goes down to the groundwater, some of the ocean, which is very difficult. And I think if you could, like, make that into a claw that brings it up, you might get a lot of garbage, don't you think?
Yeah, what were some other things we talked about in class might be a good solution? I know I'm putting you on the spot, we didn't talk about this, but what were some of the other things we talked about, that you guys came up with?
Well, we said manta ray, and just, like, some of the, like, glass things, like, plastic, you know?
And Cam, actually, on his free time aside, he was going to make a prototype, so you want to explain that a little bit?
So, basically, this is meant to go on, like, water and pick up certain garbage with this claw, like, inside of the plant, and, yeah.
So one of our students drew using, could you use Google drawings? What did you use for this?
Uh, no, it was a diagram and a Google slide.
Can anyone explain what a gyre is?
So it's kind of like a whirlpool, so it just goes in like a big circle, and everything just comes together in the middle.
Yes, how many, how many gyres are there in the oceans?
Five?
Five gyres. That's where all the plastic goes in our oceans. Trillions, right? How many trillions, over five trillion pieces of plastic in the oceans right now? And like Tyler said before, scientists are saying by 2050, there'll be more plastic in the ocean than fish. So it's definitely something we looked at, definitely, I mean, the ideas, we didn't bring, we didn't show you the ideas that students created, but each student created their own idea of how they can solve this. There was also Boine Slatt and the Ocean Cleaner Project that we looked at. Does anyone remember how old he was when he started the Ocean Cleaner Project?
He was 18 years old.
18 years old. He's collected, he's, he's gotten millions and millions and millions of dollars to try and look at this problem of the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. We looked at what, why, what, how did they first start off, trying to figure out the problem of the oceans of the Great Pacific Garbage Patch?
So he tried to rent 50 boats, but they had none, but people were able to volunteer, and they got 30, and they sailed from California all the way to Hawaii, and counted how much garbage they could pick up.
So they just drove through with these little nets, and then they had interns check all of the, count every little piece of plastic, and it was in the millions, and by that, they were able to determine how much plastic was in the, no one had ever really done it. Where's the plastic located? We, you know, there were, there's been different theories on how the plastic is in the Great Pacific Garbage Patch. Where is it located? Is it...
It's located everywhere, so it could be at the surface, or it could be all the way, like, fif, 500 feet deep.
Yeah, so we looked at the ocean, uh, Great Pacific Garbage Patch. I have to say, I have never seen collaboration like this in a class of students. I'm so, I wish I could have the entire class here, because it was that great of a class. It showed me that virtual could work for something like STEM, which I didn't, I honestly didn't know how it would work, but just their enthusiasm, the way they collaborated, the way they gave each other ideas, it was an amazing thing to watch, so I would be very proud of all four of them, and quite honestly, the whole class, what they did, so.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, good job.
Very briefly, you know, as educators, we just provided an opportunity, and I think you saw, our students ran with it, and I know times look very, very different, but the one thing that we cannot forget is how resilient our children are, and I think that proves it. So I thank, I thank everyone for coming tonight, I thank Mr. Lugameno for all his dedication and what he has done to provide this outlet also for our students, so thank you. And, Mr. Grosso?
Thank you. Mr. Lugameno, I wanted to say to you that this is outstanding, and this is very difficult to pass by your room today. We had a really quick, short chat about everything, but this is extremely impressive, and everybody, this is extremely impressive with what you, what you've done, and the models that you've created, and how you've collaborated together. This is a very difficult time to do this, and the creativity, I just ask you that, I hope that you don't stop here with what you've done, because of what, just from your inventions and, uh, you thinking outside of the box, you could bring these, these ideas to a very, very different level, and I would definitely encourage you to do that, because it's very, very impressive. I was very impressed, and I've, I want to thank you, Mr. Corrigan, for, just for supporting a program like this, and it's exciting, this is very, very exciting, so thank you very much, thank you.
I gave this group zero, like, find a real world problem, come up with a snake that can fight fires because of the...
That's awesome, yeah.
Or, because water temperature is getting warmer, that's not something that we covered, that was something that Kayla did on her very own, and it would bring in more sharks and...
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Blanket, that, it, it's amazing, they're, they're picking real world problems, and they're coming up with viable solutions, absolutely.
This is just the beginning, so it's really exciting.
Yeah.
So thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Olivia Healy. She is a very, she's very passionate about reading and writing, she also loves history. And the Unico Columbus Day Essay Contest was a great opportunity for her to combine her two passions. Olivia's essay focused on Christopher Columbus's character traits of bravery and determination to accomplish his goals, as well as providing evidence as to why Columbus's statues should remain as landmarks in our country. I'd like to call up to the podium Olivia. And Olivia, if you don't mind, just telling us a little bit about your journey through
Well, I did some research on Christopher Columbus, and found out that some people had negative aspects to say about him, but I believed that he was a good person, and he, his determination and bravery led to the founding of our lands, and I believed Columbus statues should stay up in our countries as landmarks, because it shows our pride, and it shows our pride of him. Yeah.
That concludes, that concludes our presentations for tonight. And actually, everybody who participated here tonight, this is a good opportunity for you to go home and to rest up for the next day. for you to go home and to rest up for the next day.
Alright, I just wanna say that uh, it was very brave of the students to come up and speak because it can be scary after how many years. This is still scary sometimes, so I give them a lot of credit for coming up and uh, and speaking, so job well done. Moving on. I see here superintendent update. Do you have an update? Fantastic.
So I do also wanna congratulate the students. It is a very difficult task and they did a wonderful job and I hope they do continue their, their journey with this, because there's a lot of wonderful ideas that they presented tonight. Um, but I think they can get a lot of um, traction if they really start to uh, invest in that, you know, and move forward, so I do commend them all. Um, I do wanna give a, a brief update tonight about several things going on in the district. I'd like to give a COVID update. Uh, so far, we have had two positive cases as, as of today, the twenty-sixth of October at the middle school. The affected cohorts, that would be A and B, uh, the first cohort, it affected fifty-six students out of that cohort. And with the second uh, cohort that was identified over this past weekend, would be twenty-four students uh, affected. One of the things I do want to mention is that uh, there was a new CDC guidelines that were put, put out based on what a close contact is. Uh, this can also be found on, through the district update as well, but um, any, any, any individual who has been identified as positive should, uh, it is recommended they isolate for ten days since the symptoms first began or since they received their first positive uh, reading uh, from their, from the specimen collection. Uh, second of all, probably one of the most important pieces here is that a close contact is defined as an individual that has been within six feet of an infected individual who spent a cumulative, cumulative amount of time, such as fifteen minutes or more over a twenty-four hour period, or having direct contact with infectious secretions of the positive case, which is very different from what took place from our initial um, case at the, at the middle school. Previously, it was consecutive minutes and now it's, it's been placed on cumulative. As far, as, as for the close contact, uh, that close contact needs to quarantine themselves for fourteen days uh, from the last exposure. If that person decides to go get tested and they're negative, they still have to continue their uh, fourteen, fourteen day quarantining. It is, um, I, I should also state that a close contact uh, is an individual who has had an exposure to a positive case, so therefore, if they've tested negative on a day four, they can very easily test positive on a day ten. So therefore, that is why we are asking that they quarantine themselves for fourteen days, fully aware that these decisions do impact outside activities, but it's extremely important to us that we um, have a more obligation to our staff, students, and our community at large. Uh, and, and I do wanna just thank uh, the Montclair Health Department for their collaboration. I have been on the phone with them multiple times throughout, for today as a matter of fact, but multiple, multiple times throughout last week and we are constantly collaborating with each other and I'm very grateful to them and for their partnership, so I did wanna give them um, just acknowledgement and thanking them for that. I do wanna do, I do wanna mention that our reading and writing pathways, as well as our math pathway, pathways in grades three through six, they are now running. The program will run in a bi-month, bi-monthly on weeks when uh, the set of students are in virtual only instruction and this will run from three-twenty to four o'clock at the elementary level and two-forty-five to, to three-thirty at the middle school level. And there was a virtual parent meeting on the twentieth of October at six-thirty to answer any questions, so we're excited about that. I also do wanna just acknowledge, we're starting to close down our, our winter, uh, sorry, our fall athletic uh, season. And I do, I do wanna just mention that our boys soccer team is five and two, or, this is as of the twenty-fifth. The boys football team was three and one, boys cross-country three and six, girls soccer was zero six, girls tennis was six and three, and girls cross-country was six and one. So uh, for a season that everybody did not think would happen possibly, it did and I believe that makes a major, it leaves a major impact on our students and we are definitely proud of them. Uh, one last thing I do want to mention is a reminder about Election Day, which is coming up next week, um, November third. Due to Governor Murphy's Executive Order 177, all students will be virtual on November third. I will be sending out a reminder tomorrow again about this, as well as an update on um, new policy that will be voted on tonight. So again, a reminder that Election Day will be totally virtual, no student will come to the building that day on November third.
Thank you. Moving along, from the office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, can I have a motion for B one through, um, I think it should be B one, B two, B three, and B four. So B one through B four.
So moved.
Second. Okay, B one is a motion to approve the public in executive minutes of October thirteenth. B two is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of September. B three is a motion to approve the board secretary report for the month of September. And B four is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Flandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. You're really making me work tonight, Mr. DeVito, renumbering stuff, aren't you? Alrighty, under bills, can I have a motion for uh, the new B five? Anyone?
Solved. Sorry.
Second. Great. B five is a motion to pay the following list of bills that were in our packet tonight. Uh, any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Flandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, give me a second, can I have a motion for B six to, I guess that would be B eleven?
B eleven, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, B six, a motion to approve the non-public nursing services for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Uh, B seven is a motion to approve the proposal from Trifecta Networks for the purchase of Cisco switches. Um, B eight is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Five to Sixty LLC. B nine is a motion to approve the agreement with JAG One Athletic Training Services. B ten is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Greenpoint Pictures. And B eleven is a motion to approve the following for submission of a comprehensive maintenance plan for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Flandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. And now we're done with the Bs. Alrighty, under personnel, can I have a motion for S one through, um, there's a lot, S sixteen?
So moved. Second.
S one is HIV investigation resolution for the superintendent's report. Um, do I have to read this in entirety, Mr. DeVito, or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Alright then. S two is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures. S three is a motion to accept the resignation of Sean Sweeney, uh, submitted on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty. S four is a motion to rescind motions, S nine on September twenty-ninth and S one on July ninth, two thousand twenty agendas. S five is a motion to rescind motion S nine on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty agenda for a different personnel. Um, S six is a motion to approve Lauren Acker, South End maternity leave replacement, grade three teacher. S seven is a motion to approve the following, middle school morning assistants at the rate listed. S eight is a motion to approve the tuition reimbursement. Um, S nine is a motion to approve the following, tenured staff member to receive mentoring fee reimbursement. S ten is a motion to approve the following, substitute teachers at the rate listed. S eleven is a motion to rescind motion S seven on August eighteenth, two thousand twenty and approve Krista Matera, MMS maternity leave replacement. S twelve is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S thirteen is a motion to approve the following stipend positions for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Whoops, S thirteen. S fourteen is a motion to approve the following staff members for the position of Lincoln District Liaison. S fifteen is a motion to approve the following, South End and North End staff to provide temperature checks for staff and students. And S sixteen is a motion to approve the following students for classroom, classroom observation. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Flandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under policies, we've already read these, right? So we're just approving them this evening?
Yes.
Um, can I have a motion for S seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
S seventeen is a motion to approve the second reading of the following policies. Any discussion?
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Flandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S eighteen?
So moved.
Second. S eighteen is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Flandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none? Alright, announcement of future meetings. Wow, we don't meet again until the seventeenth of November. Alrighty, fantastic, same place, same time, and then December fifteenth. Wow, it'll be Christmas before you know it. Same place, same time. Um, any further comments from the board?
No.
Fantastic. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Flandoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is over, everybody have a good night.